Call the meeting to order at 5:32. Adding or deleting items to the agenda. We have the approval of payroll from 5:16 to approve and the amount of $10,962.43. And we will talk about the Menden Seniors under business. Administrative matters. We'll sign the pay orders, make a motion. We already had a motion for 5:16 in approval, is that correct?
Yeah, if I could just go back up to the approval of the agenda, can we enter a motion?
Oh, right.
As well as the [inaudible].
Make a motion to add the two items to the agenda and approve it as written.
I second it for payroll and Menden Seniors.
All in favor?
Aye.
We all have a chance to look at the orders, payroll.
Mm-hmm.
Yes.
For 6:12 and the amount of $46,346.26. And payroll for 5:30 and the amount of $10,705.66. And make a motion to approve both of those.
I second that.
All in favor?
Aye.
Just take a moment, the side ones. We have four here, okay?
Good.
So Val, all the other board members were commenting that we still need a motion to approve the payroll in 5:16.
Okay. Make a motion to approve the payroll for 5:16 and the amount of $10,962.43.
I second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Those are only two pages? Oh, I see.
I can keep this there for the minutes if you want. Okay, letter B, the approval of the minutes from 5:24-23. Who needs to sign those?
And that motion is between Val and Seth.
Okay. So I'll make a motion to approve the minutes for 4:24-23.
Second that.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
And I'll make a motion to approve the orders for 5:08-23 between you.
The minutes?
Yeah.
The orders or the minutes?
The minutes.
Okay.
You and I were the only ones.
We approved that, I think, already on May 22nd?
Okay.
Did we, Sarah, approve the minutes on May, for May 8th on May 22nd?
Oh, was it, she couldn't sign?
You're correct.
Because of this?
Yeah, that's correct, I'm sorry.
It just needs me to sign.
Yep. That was motioned in, Seth.
Right. And then?
And then it'll just be Lisa and I from 5:22. And we all have a chance to go over those. And make a motion to approve the minutes from 5:22-23.
So you would second that one?
Oh, I second that.
All in favor?
Aye.
All right. Moving on, everybody happy there? Okay, number four, announcements. U.S. Route 4 corridor scoping study, local concerns meeting. It's a hybrid meeting, June 21st at 5:00 P.M. It's at the Rutland Regional Planning Commission, third floor, conference room, 67 Merchants Row in Rutland. A link to the meeting can be found at www.mendenbt.gov.
If you could provide a little bit more detail on that, Val, that has been warned as a select board meeting, since I anticipate that more than one member of the board will be present at that meeting. It's just warned for the open meeting law, the town business will be discussed, but there'll be no decisions made by the select board at that meeting.
Okay.
So the agenda to that meeting can be found under the select board warning on that website.
Okay. Okay, the town of Menden is seeking qualified applicants to fill three full-time positions, road commissioner, equipment operator and highway maintenance, and third, equipment operator, highway and building and grounds maintenance combined.
And again, these job descriptions can also be found on the website, on your job search page, with the job descriptions and all the applications for both CBL and non-CBL hires.
At mendenbt.gov.
Do we, we have them posted in the building and stuff like that also?
We will tomorrow, we will by tomorrow, yeah.
Okay. And we have public comment, allowing each individual two minutes to speak. Hi, Justin.
Justin Lindholm here, I just want to go over a couple of pointers, things about, thinking about primitive camping, people who do primitive camping, they're allowed on federal land, and I don't think a town can influence that too much on national forests. They have their rules, and they've come up with these rules over a long period of time, testing them, they've worked out pretty good, most of the places they've done it. The state has their rules, so the federal government gives a 14-day rule, then you have to move, and I guess you have to move like five miles, you can only do camping 14 days in a 30-day period. So they've had a lot of experience with primitive camping. The state has a three-day rule, as far as I know, on their state land, and it's best to let those, well, I think they insist that they be left alone without anybody trying to interfere from the town. I know the problem that we have with primitive camping is sewage and trash. Those are the two big problems, sometimes noise, but mostly sewage and trash, and they behave themselves in most places, it's something to keep our eye on. Our biggest problem, though, is our court system, it's not good. You can have the most beautiful ordinance, and it's, the judges have more important things on their plate, besides somebody camping that isn't supposed to be, so that's my two cents.
So to enforce it, quite difficult.
Thank you.
Fred?
Yeah, and I'll just to note that the planning commission spent a lot of time talking about this the other night, I know you do some communication from the city, I said really about the summer. Rutland City is pretty clear that there's no camping anywhere in their watershed. Their watershed, of course, includes a whole lot, and that's zero, allegedly a zero dollar policy. Their watershed, of course, overlaps with the Green Mountain National Forest perfectly for, I have no clue how that conflict is resolved, whether the federal government 14-day allowance preempts the city's watershed restrictions, I assume that somebody at some other level was talking about that. But over 60% of the city's watershed is private land up to the [inaudible]. So if you're camping in a watershed, how the city's been enforcing camping in private land not in a watershed, I guess it'll be up to the private property owners to enforce it, I'm concerned that the planning commission looks forward. Here are your thoughts on including whether the demolition camping, if we can get that a little bit of proof.
Thank you. We... I know Steve, Ellen, do we have an ordinance, Sarah, regarding this?
Well, we have zoning regulations that address camping. We don't have another ordinance besides our zoning ordinance.
Well, I know Steve was to be looking at it, I haven't heard what Steve has said about that, we haven't had any sort of meeting.
It's truthfully hard to find the word camping in our zoning regulations, part of it's unclear what camping means, but the word camping applied to a permanent residence somewhere else, and you're in your tent as a temporary resident from wherever else to live. We have pretty clear language about setting up a domicile without a permit anywhere on the property.
What is that?
I mean, you construct a structure and try to live in a structure on your property without the [inaudible], that's very clear, but the word tent and the word camping don't appear per se in our zoning regulations. Presume it's just always defaulted to the property owners and the personal reasons of the state national forests and city waters. So we, I can't speak for Steve, like we did in the events and research since last week, but it's always kind of [inaudible].
Have we had an issue in the past where we've done anything about people camping or primitive camping on town land? Has there ever been an issue where we've had to do something?
Ellen, well, I'll respond to that, we've had a few issues, like a handful of issues of people camping within the town's right-of-way, on roads or legal trails that they were, it was right in the middle of the road, which we were able to remove them from camping within or right-of-way of town highways.
The town itself, if I may add, the town owns such a new skill about property, that we don't even have a specific rule about camping on a town property, or you have a permit to camp on town property at some point, like, from [inaudible]. State, you can't in the state forest, just consider for three days, but you're not allowed to camp north of the notch road in the [inaudible] camp area in that part of the state forest. You can't camp north of the notch road, but they do allow camping on [inaudible] or south of notch road under that three-day limit. The state is not as clear as the federal government as where they have to locate after three days and how far away and [inaudible] period of time, they don't have that in their regulations, they can stay for three days, south of the notch road.
Fred, where'd you get your info from for Rutland City, as far as them saying zero tolerance in the watershed?
Where did we find it?
Yeah.
Terry Corso's daughter wrote a copy of the city's watershed ordinances, about 60 pages of it, and a personal response from the D C W.
Are they going to post the signs at least along Willerville and the accessways?
Yeah, we, there are brand-new watershed signs out there that talk about bathing and dumping and so forth, curiously, the brand-new signs that just went up in the last week or three don't mention camping in the watershed, that [inaudible] mentioned dumping, bathing, polluting, they don't mention [inaudible] other than [inaudible]. So Terry's in communication as to whether they're going to post no camping in the watershed.
I would assume they would have to in order to enforce it anyways.
Yeah, and whether there's a, sorry, I guess I don't know if there's an ordinance or a regulation, I can send you a copy of it.
Sure, that'd be great.
Just before an FYI from the planning commission that doesn't [inaudible].
Yeah, the city really doesn't, they don't like even a hiking trail through their lands anymore. Shelley Lutz was talking about, they don't even want a bike trail, and they definitely don't like primitive camping or any camping, but are they going to enforce it, are they going to put signs?
Right.
I don't know.
And Green Mountain National Forest deals with [inaudible] since they have people setting up camp for the summer, that they're used to that, they anticipate an increase this year, and they, their customary approach is the kind of a, kind of like approach where they try to inform the camper that the 14 days are nearing an end, they have to move, and they try to pray some of the social services that might solve any of the issues. They do their best not to, you know, come down too hard on people that they're actually dealing with.
Sure.
Can you move on? Would you like to speak?
I should look, Brian Gates. I had an appointment a couple weeks ago to come to the office, but I was not allowed in, I wanted to know why I wasn't allowed in the office. And then afterwards, I was met by Seth, who's he done today? Why'd you show up?
I don't think you-
Why'd you show up?
Go ahead, speak.
I'm just asking why you showed up and intimidated me and threatened me, and told me to move.
I had some paperwork to do.
Told me to move. No, the first thing you said was, why didn't you call me, so you came for me?
No, you said-
You told me, hey, I'll say exact words that you said, you told me you came for me, I said, what are you here to supervise me, and you said, no, what the fuck, why didn't you call me, you said? You're supposed to call me for a burn permit, I said, I'm putting in an application, but I still wasn't let in.
Right.
And then you had a gun, you told me, you threatened me, you told me to move, you told me that Sarah Tully has a weapon, she's training just for me. We talked about the money that you received in the office from your husband, from your wife, you told me it was in an envelope, but I watched the gentleman give her 12 $100 bills.
Brian, what does that have to do with-
It's a-
Your own self-talks?
It's called a conflict of interest in the town, we have husbands and wives-
Which one?
She-
Huh? Which part is a conflict of interest?
The conflict of interest is, when I called for an application, you showed up with your weapon, and you started intimidating me, and I still wasn't allowed in the office, and I wanted to know why.
It's not true to begin with.
No, no, it was true.
I care now.
And we asked for the ring doorbell, which would have recorded the whole thing, since you have it out there, but of course you don't have it, but I do have some videos.
Brian, I thought we had a very cordial conversation.
We did, because you told me how you were going to say, how you would make a great road commissioner, and how you got jobs on the side without, you know, tapping bill on the shoulder.
Did you get your, did you get your burn application?
I don't know if I got it or not, because no one ever called me or anything. I put in for another one today, but like you said, you gotta call me, and it's up to him.
When you came back-
It's personal.
Did you get a burn application?
No, I did not.
Can I speak? Mr. Gates, you've been informed to contact the state attorney general for any of your accusations, and this is the second time, third time I'm informing you that if you have accusations of any kind of improprieties within the select board, town employees, or anyone, feel free to contact the state attorney general or a personal lawyer.
The first thing you're supposed to do is contact the select board.
And this-
And that's what I'm trying to do, but I'm not going anywhere, because-
Excuse me?
We have, you know, we're all family, yeah. We're all family, yeah.
Okay. All right, I'm going to keep talking while you do that, because I afforded you my respect. Now you need to afford me your respect. I believe the select board agrees to contact any agency above us, because we cannot investigate fraud, because you're telling us that we're fraudulent, we can't investigate our own fraud, it's called a conflict of interest. So please contact anyone- Right, so we're telling you what to do, contact the state attorney general, contact the court-
And he's telling- Because I know you don't carry a weapon, because I talked to all your other friends.
Just have a full-
So when you showed up for a weapon, you were intimidating me.
Brian, as Lisa said-
Correct. Were you trying to intimidate me that day?
And I think we're going to-
Then why'd you show up with a gun and start yelling at me in the parking lot?
Brian, contact an attorney or file a complaint with-
Are you denying that you did that?
File a complaint with the police department.
Okay, so you admitted that you showed up and then you denied it?
Brian, this is not court, it's not court.
File a complaint.
You have court here with my neighbors, I have it on video.
Okay, Brian.
It's okay to have a secret meeting with my neighbors about me, about legal activities I was doing on my own property.
Contact- You know what, I didn't time you, your time is up. Do you understand that?
Did you time-
Do you understand, your time is up!
I got you, you didn't time these gentlemen, though, did you?
Yeah, I did.
No, you didn't, because that's what I was saying to you.
Brian-
It was longer than two minutes.
Moving on.
Brian, please, just contact the attorney general, an attorney, contact-
I can't read that.
The police department, because we are unable to-
But you're meeting with my neighbors!
Okay, we are-
Against me, I don't understand, it was okay for you guys to have-
You need to calm down.
With my neighbors who helped me, and called [inaudible].
You need to calm down.
Val was here, she saw the whole event.
You need to calm down. That is my third question, officer, for him to calm down.
Can we move over to conduct?
That is, no, that's it, the officer's handling it.
You can speak, but you don't let them speak as well, stop screaming over, if you don't let them-
Okay.
Did you see the video of Phil Douglas bribing, getting bribed by [inaudible]?
Brian, nobody got that.
Because it's the same video, and I'll show it to you again.
Attorney general.
I can show it to you again.
For the attorney general, we cannot investigate that. We cannot investigate that.
You did it to me.
What are you here to talk about?
What am I here to talk about, swat, hit him, swat him?
Did you hear Lisa say?
The police department, go to the police, file-
I did, I said something.
No, go to Rutland County Police.
This officer doesn't want to do anything to you.
Officer, tell, right, go down to Rutland County Police and let them handle it.
We are, we will.
Okay, moving on.
And that's the end of it now, we've discussed-
No, it won't be the end.
No, no, right now, today, is the end of it, yes.
Okay, now I have another comment.
Well, you have to give someone else a chance, then we'll come back to you.
My last one.
Okay. Is anyone online?
Excuse my yelling, I apologize for that.
Yeah, that sounded like a threat to, same thing Brian, I'm telling you.
Moving on.
Are there any other people who want to speak? Sarah, are there any hands up on the thing?
Hold on, there's one hand ready.
Thank you.
Yes, my hand is up, Carol Gates, Carol Gates.
Yes, ma'am.
Yes. So, I have videos of bribery in the town, I have videos of all those select board meetings that you were made from 2021, I have you, the town, select board members and the constable voting for the state attorney for our residents, but you won't vote for the state attorney for another resident.
Okay.
This [inaudible] already came here from the town, and filed a complaint with the state attorney against all of you, you're all-
Thank you.
... members, you're all bribing each other, hey, give me my time, this [inaudible] we want over two minutes, I want over two minutes as well.
You could still speak.
Yeah. So, did you threaten my husband, kept praying?
I have no, I have no, I have no comment on that, Carol.
Threat my husband.
I have no comment on that.
He's like, we get it, so you're a liar, Val's a thief, Sarah's a thief, who I don't think my husband-
Don't laugh at her.
Mr. Gates, she's speaking, let your wife speak.
Don't tell me what to do, then. It's not your time to speak.
It's your wife's time, let's afford her the time.
That's fine.
Carol?
Go ahead, Mrs. Gates.
Go ahead, Carol.
And you all need to go to jail, but especially you Seth, especially you.
You're running down on your time, so if you want to wrap it up, please.
Yeah, that was a dick, girl.
Thank you.
Stay down.
Thank you. Thank you.
All right, moving on.
Thank you, moving on.
We're moving on. Now, moving on. Moving on. Put your hand down.
Okay. Give him the minute, you have a minute, give him the minute.
Do we have our 15?
Yeah, I have to give it to him.
Yeah.
How many minutes?
He's, he gets an extra minute.
Yay.
You don't like that, do you?
Go ahead, Mr. Gates.
You don't like it, do you?
Mr. Gates, it has to be a constructive conversation, and I'm happy to have a constructive conversation with you.
So I've been to the town on numerous occasions about a driveway next to mine that keeps getting washed out into the road, I texted Val again last week after that downpour, and the road's still full of dirt. So, two years ago, they told those neighbors that they had to fix the driveway, there was all kinds of specs, there was a spec sheet where they have to do such and such, nothing's ever been done, and it keeps destroying the bottom of my driveway, now he just locked it, I know why, obviously.
Okay. That's it on that conversation?
Are we going to fix it?
Is that it on that?
Are we going to do anything about it?
There was a contract, Sarah, was there a contract to fix that driveway?
No.
I don't put that information in front of people.
No, there's no contract to fix the driveway, they moved it off, just like I said, if you don't, if you didn't do a zone violation to them-
You have like 10 seconds left, so let me-
They could just get away with it, and you guys don't really care, because it's my driveway that's being affected, just like my husband.
Okay, if you want that looked into, request it.
Who is?
I'm new, request it, send me an email, you have the email address, send an email, and I will look into it and give you an answer. After I give you the answer, you have to abide by that answer, I can't make something up, I can't do.
We already had, it was supposed to be fixed.
Okay.
We don't need anything else, it was supposed to be fixed, it's just not being fixed.
Okay. Okay, so just send me the information.
It's just not being fixed, right?
And then, this is over now, your two minutes is up, I responded to you.
You should talk to the neighbors and have them-
I responded to you, done, move on.
Can I ask a question?
Sure. Sure.
Did anyone show up and, and try and find the boundary line to fix that?
No. No, I actually, I actually showed up with a boundary line.
It's my turn.
Well, you asked me a question, I'm just answering.
I believe someone came. Okay, we'll get that information, all straightened out for the next one.
I wrote it down.
There would have been a survey in there, there would have been a flag up.
I wrote it down here, but you need to send an email to me requesting-
Nobody ever came. It's the same way it has been for three years, two and a half years.
Did you tell them not to go on your property?
Huh?
Did you tell them not to go on your property?
The people, who? I'm not allowed on their property, I can't tell them not to be on mine.
Can we move on?
So it's been noted, and we'll move on.
I will look into it and send you an answer, but you need to send me an email first, and I will-
We have already, numerous times.
Okay, done. Good.
Moving on.
Number six, business, we- Number six business, we added the Mendon seniors. Let's talk about that.
So, a representative from the Mendon seniors contacted us and they received, the Mendon seniors is an unorganized group of individuals that do not have a legal entity to themselves. And they receive financial support from the Southwest Council on Aging in which they experience difficulty cashing any of their checks because they don't have a bank account in the Mendon seniors name. So they're, they potentially are looking to the town to help rectify this situation. The only measure that the town can do is to take on the Mendon seniors as part of a recreation program and they would operate under the term of Mendon, not individually. So there's nothing that needs to be decided tonight, but I believe that is what they're having a hardship with and this will have to be discussions with the select board and with Nancy Gondella, our treasurer, to figure out if there is a way to bring the committee in-house then, for them to be standing alone.
Any questions?
No questions from me.
Moving on. To the recreation playground project. We have Liam here today. Thank you Liam for coming.
Sure. I got a copy of this for each of you as well.
Thanks.
So we spent some time working on a new playground structure for the town.
Let Liam talk.
My understanding is that there's some funds that have been set aside. I've worked with Ron Pitnelli on, on a proposal that's attached.
This conference will now be recorded.
It wasn't being reported before. As well as on the material that needs to get put in, the wood chips that need to get put in. The current total of the project stands at, I think, just, from Pitnelli, at just over $63,000. And then on the, they came back this week and said we need about 95 yards of material. That's about $2,200 delivered for the wood chips out of a company out in New Hampshire. The one piece of this that I do not have figured out yet is the excavation work that will need to be done to the area. They need a grade change of like four to five inches over the course of the entirety of it. Then I just got the proposed map of how big this play structure is going to be so we can start to mark it out on the field and see what we need from a grade perspective. They obviously said like, don't dig a hole, then you will have a bunch of wet chips. So Pitnelli and Associates is booking out at the earliest, last we spoke about it, which was a couple of weeks ago now, they were into mid-November on this from an install perspective. The current quote does include full installation by their team, so no volunteers being used. And the wood chips obviously are just a drop and go, so we could need to like spread them. So I'm here tonight, I guess number one, to understand the process and number two, to hopefully understand how we get this to a signature from whoever decides it, whether that's the rec committee or the select board or somebody else, so that we can lock in with Pitnelli and Associates at the very least and get on their books. Either for November or whatever we push it, I'm not sure, in the next year they will hold the pricing for us. And then the second order of business, I guess, is that we do need to, I met with the team from the Rutland Rec Department. They came up and did an inspection of, I will say inspection in quotes, they didn't, like, they're not stamping their name on it, but they did an inspection of the current play structure. And after that inspection, it's kind of determined that the best course of action is probably to remove that play structure. At this time, they gave some areas where we could like make some improvements to it if we wanted to. But my gut tells me it's good to pass it to prime, it should be removed. And I'm happy to work with the rec committee on removing it, but before we do, so I thought I'd make sure. Could do that. There was talk at one point of potentially putting it for sale to somebody on a private level. I don't know if that's in the town's best interest, but like, seeing the N R As and I don't know if you want to carry the liability with that.
Right.
Even if somebody signed off on it.
Right.
If you did take it apart, do you know where the, where would you put the wood? Do you need help with that?
I think, I think it should just go to the transfer station, I guess. I mean, there's plastic parts on the phone bit and I don't, I don't know if it's pressure treated, I think it's sear. My guess would be it should just go to the transfer station. And I can facilitate that. I can make it go away.
I think they go away before the transfer station goes out.
So in order to execute this Sarah, we would, we would need to probably, because of procurement policy with excavating, would that be the first step, finding somebody to make the area?
Yeah, the excavation, yeah, the excavation, it probably is not a substantial, a minor purchase and could be done under just a painting quote without the certification. The same thing with ordering wood chips.
And then I guess from.
So we didn't, we would draft a scope of work and then get some quotes on what it's going to cost.
Just a quick question. Wood chips is 2,200, right? But in here it says, and maybe I'm not reading this correctly, paid back page parts by other, they're saying 4,320 and that's in the grand total it looks like for the.
You're correct, so he, he put that in. The other piece that's in here that will cause this, I guess, to go down overall from where we stand right now is, I've asked him to budget the swing set in two different ways and he's done it. He's included both ways in here, so we're going to run into a proximity issue. If, the current design is, they call bays, there's two bays in swing sets. Each bay gives two swings, so four swings total. We, almost no matter where we put it up by the basketball court, we run into a proximity issue to either the basketball court or the play structure, if we keep it as two bays that are connected, so think about it as three uprights and two crossfields. So I had him budgeted as both the three uprights and two crossfields, but then additionally another, another upright, so that we could separate the place at, the swing set.
So we would just be adding an upright?
Yeah, one would be little, like the baby swings and then one would be regular swings, but that way we can position them on either side and keep the proximity.
Two separate things, we're asking, which can be either made into one long bay of two or two individual on their own. So he listed it.
It's just a matter of staking it out on the ground and seeing where it's actually.
Right, but he listed it, his price wise, he listed it as three upright structure pillars and then one, two crossbars, correct?
Correct.
Okay.
And then the wood chips he added in, although he did, he did say, we got the phone, are you getting the wood chips from somebody else? And I said, probably, and he said, good, because it will cost less. So I'm not sure why didn't we actually prove it.
All right, so, yeah, we'll check that.
So that can come out of this.
Now, on the wood chip people, it says a 30-day valid quote for the price. So can we, are we going to take delivery way before we actually install it or will they hold this price until November?
He thought that the price increase between now and even a year from now probably won't change by more than about 5% at the most. And he thought it may not change at all.
So we're talking like maybe a 200 and something dollar increase? How does that work Sarah, when we bid on something and then it increases?
We just budgeted for higher, not knowing that we're not going to take wood chips and deal with them.
We lost Sarah's, hold on Sarah, we can't hear you.
Oh, shit.
You're muted. There you go.
I'm sorry, I muted. So this is just an amendment to the quote, it doesn't change the scope dramatically, so we can make minor changes in the quote, the scope of the work and not have to go back and re-get it. It's just for the minute, to prepare for low cost.
All right, that's fine.
And I guess what the rec committee needs to understand is the funding that, if this gets greenlit, what's the funding that's set aside to do it and then therefore we'll know how much we need to raise in additional funds. And we're looking to budgets that we already have or reserves that we already have for the upcoming month.
Did you want that information right now?
Sure, the more information I can get the better.
Sarah, I don't know if you heard him?
Oh, I believe so. I think what Liam is asking for is we have $50,000 in the ARCA funds that are obligated for the project. There is also the balance of what's in the recreation fund, which, you know, we're approaching year end here, so Nancy will have the most current information on the balance of that fund. And then a capital campaign would be approved by the select board on, you know, a purpose statement in which they might solicit funds which could be made out to the town of Mendon Recreation. Under the verbal line could be for the recreation fund, for the playground. But the board would have to approve that capital campaign.
Sarah, when you say capital campaign, is that a capital fundraising campaign? Or is that a?
Yeah, that's a fundraising campaign.
Okay, so that, yeah.
A fundraising campaign and people can donate money to the town. They would just, you would want to identify a core purpose. And we do have a recreation fund that the, that the expenses would be coming out of. So Nancy Gondella can also provide additional information on if we need to follow any specific requirements as far as taking in money with our auditors for a particular purpose.
Did that answer all your questions, I'm sorry?
Yeah, so from a process standpoint, in order to move this forward, it sounds like there's already $50,000 that have been allocated. You come back to you with a finalized quote from Pitnelli that removes the wood chips in order to get this moved forward and understand what the capital fund needs to include so that we can then work towards that number?
Yeah, Liam, if you just contact me, we'll, we'll discuss like a mission statement or a purpose statement that the select board can approve on what you're collecting funds for.
Okay. And then just very quickly on other news, we did do a soil sample at the town field and laws is expected to come when they're done putting the corn in, as they say. Your guess is as good as mine, but I'm hoping in the next few weeks they're going to come and do, they have two separate applications, one is to change the pH balance in the soil so that grass grows and then just to put some fertilizer and broadleaf inhibitor down. And there'll be both of those, one of the lime or whatever they use to change the pH, there's no wait period after that, the other spray they recommend, like just waiting overnight. We're waiting until baseball season ends to prepare, we're on the books for that.
I'm sorry, I missed that last part. You're waiting for baseball season to end before the fertilizer?
Yeah, I mean partially because they're putting the corn in, but also because I didn't want to tie the field up for one day if there's kids that need to go.
Right, right. Yeah, the rec area would be closed for one day while they apply that.
Yeah. And then is there any objection to taking the play structure down? Or just a lot of?
I think it's a good idea.
I do too. We can go with that, right Sarah?
Yeah, and we can pass the bill about it, it's open.
Yeah. Sure.
Thank you. You have everything you need?
I think so.
Any questions? Overview of projects awarded with grant funds. First one is Route 4 scoping study.
We are well into the construction season, so I just wanted to give you a update on some of the projects that we're working on that were awarded with grant funds. First is the Route 4 scoping study, which is part of that US Route 4 corridor scoping study with the local concerns meeting that will happen next week. We are under contract with VHB Engineers and they will be working through into 2024 and will be making, they'll be making quarterly bills to us and we will be submitting those for reimbursement. Under Julie Zen, the Aromantic Control Grant and the Better Roads Grant. This Aromantic Control, some of those Aromantic Control measures need to be completed by the end of the month. We are actively pursuing a contractor that can do that work by the end of the month. We don't have any additional information on that. The Town Onset Generator Grant was awarded and B B Carter is organizing and lining up contractors for that work. We had to go out to bid and submit quotes on that prior to applying for the grant, so it's accepting one of those quotes and getting that line, or that work lined up for this summer. That needs to be completed by mid-September. The Wider Road Dry Hydrant is a project we've been working on for two years. We do have grant funds from the Rural Fire Protection Task Force and we've been working with Troy Dare on the specs on that. We have $10,000 in funding from the state, but he hopes that we can apply for upwards of $15,000, add in $5,000 in federal funds to help support that. But he's giving me the timeline on what we would need to do and fulfill in order to complete the project to get that additional funding. Cost estimate on this project is upwards of $20,000. So some of the funds would still need to come out of the public safety reserve fund. The balance of that. First, we need that, that hydrant is functioning, but it needs repair. And so we're doing a full replacement on that with the grant fund. Oh, and then we're looking on the Granton Aid. Granton Aid will upgrade one of the hydrologically connected road segments that do not meet standards. Bill is looking to identify what segment we will be upgrading this summer and completing that by September. I think all paperwork needs to be done on that by October. And that's $11,000 in grant funds. So those are the must-do projects this summer. And just as a further update, I emailed all of you that the town of Mendon did not receive the Class 2 Oak Highway Grant, reserved for research and things, and the Structure Grant, which we applied to release to cover in real deal. So that's going to require us to look at our capital improvement plan and figure out how to shuffle things around because we didn't receive grant funding for those. Those could have been like next year's projects anyways, but we usually apply for the grant, we get the grant this year and we go into construction for the next season.
Thank you. Any questions, anybody? Next, we have the Rutland County Sheriff's Contract. Anyone have a chance to read that? I did. Are we signing this this evening?
Yeah, if you could move to approve. Again, there were no changes between last year and this year except for to the rate, which the hourly rate for a contract is $8,237, which is what we had listed.
So it was a $1.86 per hour change, total of $2,095 change? Did you have any questions?
I have a question. By signing this contract, does that mean they're going to... We will have an officer for X amount of hours per week? Or does this mean when they have the availability to give us an officer?
No, this contract is supposed to ensure that we have coverage based on the contract. And if the Rock County Sheriff is not fulfilling that contract, then we need to address that accordingly with Liam and the Sheriff's Department.
Okay, and how are they doing this year? Are they fulfilling it?
No, they are not.
So why would we sign this until we research why they're not fulfilling it?
I don't have an answer for that besides we want coverage as of July 1st. So you do have time between now and July 1st to talk about that.
We have 32 hours a week, is that correct?
Yes. And I don't have the statistics in front of me on what they have been providing to us, and so Nancy and Lenny would have that information.
But it has not been fulfilled thus far?
No.
How does that work, Sarah? Do we get a bi-weekly breakdown of the amount of hours before...
They have a system that we have authorization to go in and check out how many hours have been spent and when. So I believe Nancy and Lenny have access to that.
Is it possible before the first?
We have a meeting on the 26th.
On the 26th, so we could put it off and address it then?
Right.
I think we should.
If we put this off until the next meeting, which I believe is the 26th, can we get some kind of statistics on how many hours they're here and what we pay them? And also like the vehicle, I noticed we pay gas, and it's like $350, max at $350 a gallon. We pay current rate when it's not, right?
I don't know anything about that, about how many hours.
It's in number two.
Yeah, I can certainly tell you how many hours they took.
Yeah. And just a question, because I don't even know what this means, maybe somebody does. It says here cruiser cost and ACO cost.
Animal control officer.
That's the one. Okay, thank you. Well, I didn't want to look directly out of my figurehead.
I will answer what I can. If it's above my pay grade, I will let you know.
Obviously, you're not on this page, yeah. Okay, so they do the animal control also, I did read that, so. All right, so if we could just get some information, how over last year, what we paid, how many hours they actually worked, and what that's going on with, and we can make some kind of decision. Now, do we have to stay with the Rutland Police? Sorry.
Sheriff's is the Rutland County Sheriff, and you don't have many options there, no, because we eliminated our department.
Right, but we don't have... That could be a conversation in the future. We don't have to... If they can't provide us someone, or they're not providing us the services like we need for the reasons we need them, you know, for traffic control and all of those other reasons of community safety, maybe we should be looking at something else after we get all that information. Just to throw it out there, that's all I'm doing.
Yeah, let's get the information.
Sarah, did the department last year experience a shorthanded staff?
Yes. Yes, so the Rutland County Sheriff has experienced shorthanded personnel. So if they're not able to fulfill our contract, we shouldn't necessarily be entertaining the number of hours. They need to tell us what they can provide to us if it's still going to be a challenge for them. We request that an officer be assigned to Mendon so that they can do community pleasing and get to know the Town of Mendon. And I believe we've had three assignments this past year of different sheriffs, and it may have been more than that.
Because obviously, we're not their top priority. Understandable, because it is their sheriffs. But if we're paying for $80,000 some odd thousand dollars for someone to be here for X amount of hours to do certain things, it's a lot of money, not... I know we don't pay them if they're not here, but still, the point is, we're not doing it. All right, so we're going to take it.
So Val, we do have a hand raised online if Carol Yates would like to speak.
Is it...
Yes, Sarah, a question about the bids that are up. I was through a page today, and I did not see any bids that are... any bid requests. So could you email me any bids that do come up for excavation work, montrata work, no my husband's business? Because it didn't seem like there were any jobs available in the town, but there are.
So when we go out to bid in accordance with our procurement policy, those are all publicly bid, so they require public notice. If it's a minor purchase under our procurement policy, then we just have to get a few quotes for comparison.
So you don't have to post them publicly at all?
No, not... It depends on how much the job is for. We have three different tiers.
For up to $5,000, you know, up to $30,000. Yeah, I've read all that. So I'm wondering who gets to bid on any project in order?
So when we go out to public bid, when we go out to public bid, it's posted on the Vermont Bid Board, which is federally accepted by FEMA and the state of...
Both are bids, you know, kind of like the ones that now Taylor, Hudson, Ball, WDA, and...
So those are minor... Those are minor expenses, and we receive at least three bids in order to compare.
You just asked your friends to...
No, we ask qualified contractors, the Town of Mendon...
And my husband's also a qualified contractor, but he doesn't get his phone calls, and his business cards get taken out of the office. I'm just asking, because it's supposed to be publicly... When you have a bid, you're supposed to publicize it, like, you know, publication, like, "How many carros?"
No, we post it on the Vermont Bid Board, which is federally accepted.
Unless you're that door.
I do. The Vermont Bid Board.
Because I didn't see anything on the website.
Okay, not on the website.
I think...
Carol, I'll follow up with you on that, and then you will link to the Vermont Bid Board so that Brian's company can get signed up on that.
Yeah, please, thank you.
So can I just ask a question for my own clarification? So if someone wants to be part of the bid bidding process, they would go to the Vermont Bid Board and sign up as a business so that when you're looking for a minor bid, you can go there and look for them? Because they've already been approved through the state?
So, well, it's not really like that. The Vermont Bid Board is a public notice board of all of our publicly noted bid process. So in accordance with our procurement policy, if the project is of a certain threshold, we're required to go to public bid with it, and that's where we would publicly notice any work that we're accepting. And as a company signs up on the bid board as a contractor, they can put in special keywords that if we're going out for road construction, that they would receive all notice for all towns in Vermont that are doing or going out to bid for some sort of road construction work. And then they would be noticed that the project has been posted, and they can follow the directions of the public posting in order to submit a bid. For minor purchases, the Town of Mendon solicits at least three bids in order to get a comparable cost to know that we're doing business in, you know, at paying the best price. But those are first smaller contracts. We don't have to go to public bid on small contracts.
That's just a personal...
And the procurement policy is posted on our website.
Right, okay. I just wanted to clear up the bid board thing.
So if it's small, it's personal, you guys can decide. Nobody's personal with trees or...
All right, let's go...
Any questions?
Do we even have to make a motion or something to move this to June 26th? The sheriff thing?
Can we just add it to the agenda for the 26th, Sarah?
Yes, and you can do the meeting on the 26th.
Moving on to Letter D, Adoption of Visitor Code of Conduct Policy.
Oops, Sarah, you're muted.
All right, I'm muted. So I just wanted to let you know that the policies were posted on the website under the Select Board's addenda for discussion tonight, and typically, there are copies available there in the conference room for the vote.
Did you have a chance to read it?
Yeah. Do you want this? Do you want the new one? So what do we do, Sarah? I'm new to this process.
You're muted, Sarah. You're muted.
You're going to want to go into executive session in order to discuss this policy. So Val, I believe you have the wording for that.
Was that put in front of me?
Hold on just a second. I'm going to pull out that ready, and then you can just say, "Don't move." So the motion will be by Val Taylor to find that premature general public knowledge regarding the town council annual analysis of a legal matter would clearly place the town at substantial disadvantage because the discussion will include confidential attorney-client communication made for the purpose of providing professional legal services to the town.
So moved?
I second.
All in favor?
Val will second if I can hear that.
Yes.
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, we'll call the meeting to order at 6:58. Coming out of executive session. After discussing and going over the visitor code of conduct for the Town of Mendon, little explanation of what we... Why we have created the visitor code of conduct. The Town of Mendon's commitment to providing a positive experience for those working, simply conducting their business and also for the visiting town facilities, including the town office and other public spaces. It was of highest importance to us. Are there any questions regarding the visitor code of conduct? I will make a motion to approve visitor code of conduct for the Town of Mendon.
I'll second that motion.
All in favor?
Aye.
And now, can you please... Do you want me to... Can we just go directly into executive session to discuss? Is it something specific? I'm sorry, I don't have it in front of me.
I'm going to read the motion, Val, and you can say, "Don't move." Val Taylor will rule to enter executive session with Town Council, the Sarah Tully, the Town Administrator, Stephanie Bridge, the Woodkeeper and Assistant Clerk, Nancy Gondalow, the Treasurer and Clerk, with the Select Board present, to discuss Town Council's analysis of a legal matter as allowed under Title I, Section 313A, 1F.
So moved?
Second that.
Aye.
All in favor?
Aye.
And we will go into executive session at 7:02. This is the Mendon Select Board. We have just come out of executive session at 8:08. No action was taken in executive session. The notice of trespass on town property is tabled until further discussion, and we will adjourn the meeting at 8:09.